At this time, I will call the Perry City Council meeting Tuesday, October 16th, 2018 to order please. We have a call. Item three is invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please rise. I'd like to call on Councilman Reverend Willie King with Faithful Bible Fellowship for the invocation.
In thy name, yes please. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity. And all we do is pray now, as Michael came through to say, "Lord, a lot of things happened. I just pray for all of that. The people can recover. Everything will go well for us, Lord. I ask you to bless us now and give us the wisdom as we handle the business of the city. We do thank him. We praise him. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd call on Councilman William Jackson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four is recognitions and presentations. We have one. Item four A is an introduction of Ms. Ashley Harden, Economic Development Director. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, Mayor Council, Ms. Harden, would you join me if I could? Mayor Council, you probably have already met Ashley. Ashley's been with us since this past Tuesday. It was her first day, October 9th. And of course, she's our new Director of Economic Development. We went through a very extensive nationwide search to find Ms. Harden. We had a number of quality applicants, but Ms. Harden, of course, rose to the top. And she has been here for the past couple of weeks, already moved here with her family. She joins us from Kansas, from Shawnee, Kansas. And I'm going to read some of your accolades here, Ms. Harden. In Kansas, she worked for the Leavenworth County Development Corporation in Leavenworth, Kansas, for the past five years, where she served as Special Projects Manager and Grants Director, and also Economic Development Coordinator. In her role with the Leavenworth County Development Corporation, she did a lot of business retention and expansion type initiatives, but also business recruitment, working with site selectors on site selection projects, grants, local state senate programs. Basically, if you look at traditional economic development, the totality of that, she's done all of that, which is fantastic, very well-rounded. Also, she has experience in the chamber world, heading up a chamber in Tennessee, and some private sector experience as well. Ms. Harden is a graduate of Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee, and she has, like I mentioned, recently relocated to the city with her husband, Greg, and her two daughters, Taylor, who is three, and Callie, who is one. She's four today.
Mm-hmm.
And I also happen to know that Ms. Harden is a big Taylor Swift fan.
Yes.
For better or for worse.
(laughing).
So, we welcome Ms. Harden. Again, she's been here about a week, and she has been doing an excellent job, jumping right in. I know she looks forward to meeting with each of you, and, you know, working with the general public, working with our partner organizations, and making Perry a better place. Ms. Harden?
Would you have anything to say?
Thank you for bringing me here. We love Perry. We love the 80-degree weather in October. It snowed in Kansas City yesterday, so I'm glad I didn't get there for that. We had a little bit of water damage in our new home here in Perry with the hurricane, but I know that doesn't happen very often. So, thanks again, and I look forward to meeting with you guys and helping grow this town. So, thanks.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you on board. Thank you very much. Item five are citizens with input. Does any citizen here wish to address council at Item six is the review of minutes. Item six A, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the October 1st, 2018 work session, the October 2nd, 2018 pre-council meeting, the October 2nd, 2018 council meeting. Please note that Councilmember Hunt was absent from the October 1st and 2nd meetings. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion. If we approve these minutes as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, deletions, discussion, or changes that need to happen to these minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please let the record indicate that Councilman Hunt was absent from those two meetings. Item seven is old business. Item seven A, or ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item seven A-1, this is the second reading of an ordinance rezoning property from C-2, General Commercial District, to G-U, Government Use District, and to remove D-D, the Downtown Development Overlay District. The property is located at 1600 Macon Road. The tax map numbers are 0P-0420, double 03,000 for the zoning change, 0P-420 and 03A, 000, 0P-0420, 03B, 000, 0P-0420, 03C, 000, 0P-0420, 03D, 000, for the overlay district removal. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. So, these are properties owned by the Houston County School Board. The four properties that are relating to the removal of the overlay district are the four properties outlined in red on this map. They are associated with the Houston County Board of Education. And X building, the Downtown Development Overlay District does not apply to the school district, and that's the reason for us removing that. The other parcel, other consideration, is just above that on this map, one marked P-42-3. That is a property that the school district recently purchased and used for the expansion of the high school parking lot in relation to the addition of the new gymnasium. That property is currently zone C-2, and we're requesting that it change to G-U, Government Use, to be consistent with the other properties owned by the school district in that area. The planning commission recommended approval of this. There were no objections to the sound changes at the time of the issue initially.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Wood or his staff concerning this item at this time? Hearing none. This is the second reading. It is time for adoption. If you see fit, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance that rezones property from C-2, General Commercial District, to G-U, Government Use District, and removes the D-D, Downtown Development Overlay District, for the property located at 1600 Road, 1600 Macon Road, as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Excuse me. Thank you. Item seven A-2, council, this is the second reading of an ordinance relative to what's known as the Brunch Bill. Based on information that we had received in our pre-council meeting from Mr. Gilmore, we are being asked to table this motion. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we table the ordinance relative to the Brunch Bill.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Excuse me. Item seven A-3, council, this is the second reading of an amendment relative to the solicitation ordinance. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the purpose of this ordinance is to prohibit solicitation anywhere in the city except for those organizations or groups that already have an exemption. For example, the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts. We recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore or his staff relative to this ordinance? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the amendment relative to the solicitation ordinance as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight is any other old business. Item eight A, is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item eight B, is any other old business from council members? Ms. Bonham Grace?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, do you have any other old business?
No, sir.
From the city manager? Thank you. Any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. And any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Waters?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. Item nine A are matters that have been referred from the October 16th, 2018 pre-council meeting that we held at 5:00. Mr. Gilmore, is anything that came from that meeting that needs our attention at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item nine B are resolutions for introduction and adoption. Nine B-1 is a resolution to amend the City of Perry Personnel Management System to provide an amendment to the public safety employee conditions. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack is a proposed resolution, which would, if you adopt it, would amend our personnel resolution, our management system to do two things. The first one is to eliminate the requirement for public safety employees, and the department has to have a telephone, since that's antiquated now. Almost everybody has a smartphone, or it's provided to them by the city. And then the second thing is to remove the distance requirement for public safety employees with a restriction in order to respond. So, if you approve this, then both, that is removed from the public safety, so they can hire whoever they think would be appropriate, regardless of where they live.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution to amend the City of Perry Personnel Management System to provide an amendment to the public safety employee conditions as described.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank Item nine C is the award of bids. Nine C-1 is bid number 2019-04 for a landscape maintenance award revision. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is pertaining to landscape maintenance of the Public Safety Training Center. You recall, at a subsequent meeting, or a prior meeting, you did award a bid for the maintenance of this facility to Johnny B's. Subsequent to the award of that bid, Johnny B's was unable to provide the city with the requisite insurance documentation and also the commercial pesticide application license documentation. Therefore, we are requesting that you cancel that contract and go with the next lowest bidder, qualified bidder, which is Dixie Lawn and Landscape, at the amount of $610 per month. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, council? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation from the department to do two things. One, to cancel the previous initial bid that we had approved, and two, to award this bid for the Public Safety Training Center to Dixie Lawn and Landscaping Incorporated, at the amount of $610 per month as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine C-2 is bid number 2019-05 for a tandem axle dump truck. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, the bid 40 for a tandem axle dump truck that was approved in the capital budget for this fiscal year. Staff has reviewed the bids and is recommending awarding Middle Georgia Freightliner the award at the amount of $116,453 for the tandem axle dump truck. Be happy to answer any questions you might
Hearing no questions. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept and approve the department's recommendation to award this bid in the amount of $116,453 to Middle Georgia Freightliner as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine C-3 is bid, bid number 2019-06 for nine half-ton pickup trucks. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, Mayor and council, the documentation I have before you is for the purchase of nine full-size pickup trucks. You can see that we received three bids on that. All bids were considered equal, they all met specs, and staff is recommending moving forward with a low bidder, Gin Motor Commercial Fleet of Covington, Georgia, at the amount of $179,000, $179, $163.
For all nine?
Yes, sir, for all nine trucks.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept and approve the department's recommendation to award the bid in the amount of $179,163 to Gin Motor Commercial Fleet of Covington, Georgia as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine C-4 is for concrete sidewalk repairs, a ramp landing, and a ramp. Battalion Chief Crumpton?
Mayor, council, you see this picture here? This is the entrance of our headquarters station. What we are proposing to you is to, you can see, this area here used to be contained with a bunch of hall corn bushes. We have removed those in an attempt to make this area more usable. We are proposing to you to allow us to concrete the rest of this space in as a Phase One project. Phase Two would be, we would like to, if you're familiar with the downtown area where the park is, that lean-to structure, basically coming off of this side right here and coming out this way, so that it would protect from this area here and the entire walkway to the entrance of the fire department. Also, in that, this is kind of an aerial shot here, just kind of going back there to that again. We're wanting to fill all this in with concrete. There is an area here that has been broken from previous construction, so also included in this would be for this area to be replaced, and also an ADA sidewalk right here, and make this, there are four determinant parking spaces here, and to make this a handicap space with this curb cutout with a ramp, so this makes our headquarters station ADA compliant. Also, we feel like this will give benefit too, with that cover, so when we have kids come through, it's tours and things such as that. It's a nice area to line them all up in a single file line, and then you can be able to teach them and be out of the weather if you need.
Thank you, Chief. Does any member of council have any questions? Chief, may I assume that you are recommending that we award it to the low bidder?
Yes, sir, and that does fit in our 7% policy, but we did have a local bidder to beat us on that 7%.
Very good. Thank you, sir. If there are no questions from council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept and approve the department's recommendation to award the bid in the amount of $4,000 to Jason Garcia Concrete LLC of Jeffersonville, Georgia as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank Item nine D is a special event application. Nine D-1, the City of Perry is hosting Holiday on Carol on December 8th, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., and there are some street closures that have been requested. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. This is a new, first-time event sponsored by the city, and calls for our regular footprint downtown, plus the addition of Main Street on the far side of the old courthouse. The reason for the addition of the other street is to provide a route for the antique fire truck to do the, you know, to carry the kids around as part of this holiday celebration. So, the part of this requires council approval, is the closure of the four streets surrounding the courthouse for the duration of the event.
No issues regarding that?
None at all from police. Sounds like a fun event.
Fire.
Movie, and cookies, and cocoa, cider, and all those kinds of events.
Sounds like a great event. Fire Department, okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any questions of Chief Lynn concerning the street closures from council? Hearing none. Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the street closings for the special event application, Holiday on Carol, December 8th, 2018, as described.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is there anything further we need to address under new business?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 are council member items. Ms. Bonham Grace?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a couple of things. I was hoping Ms. Myers would be here. She does a lot better than I do. But we're rounding out the month of October with some very big events here in the City of Perry. First, this Saturday, the 20th, we are having the First Oktoberfest, which will be held downtown from 2:00 to 9:00 o'clock. You'll know it when you see it. We'll have live music, refreshments, events, you know, kid zones, that type of thing for the children. Should be a wonderful, family-friendly event. And then, following that, the next Saturday, which is the 27th, we are having the first-ever Georgia Florida Tailgate Party, which will be held at Heritage Park. It's one of those deals, bring your own piggy, and bring your tents, your chairs, your friends. We'll be broadcasting the Georgia Florida game on a huge HD screen. Should be pretty awesome. And then finally, Wednesday, October 31st, we are having Sweets and Treats on Downtown Streets, which is something that the city does in partnership with our Chamber of Commerce. And our merchants downtown participate. Have your, you can dress up if you want, have your kids there dressed up. Go around and do a trick-or-treating while you see what our merchants have to offer downtown. You can find details of all of this on our website, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Waters, do you have anything for us?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 are department hidden staff items. We'll start with Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development. Mr. Wood?
Yes, I do have one item, Mayor. And maybe not quite as fun as the events that Robert was talking about, but on Saturday, November 3rd, the Housing Team will be hosting a neighborhood cleanup in the Smoke community. And so, we're looking for volunteers that are interested in helping us out. That is Saturday, November 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. until noon. If you want to volunteer, you can go to the Houston County Habitat for Humanity website. I believe it's hokohabitat.org to sign up to volunteer there. We'll have tools and everything to help out, and there'll be a lunch provided afterwards.
Very good. Thank you, sir. From the Department of Economic Development. Ms. Harden?
We don't have anything.
Thank you. From the Police Department. Chief Lynn?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. From Fire and Emergency Services. Battalion Chief Crumpton?
Nothing, sir.
From the City Parks Office. Ms. Warren?
Nothing to say, sir.
Thank you. Fire Marshal doesn't have anything?
Okay. No, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Item 12 are general public items. Does any member of the general public wish to address council at this time?
Oh, no.
Yes, please stand and give your name and address.
My name is Mark Green. The owner of Crossroads Apartments here on General Courtney, 319 General Courtney. I want to discuss the issue that happened on the first of the month, my water bill being taken off of my property. My water bill was paid following talking to Mr. Gilmore, the director. He said I didn't have all my documents, but all my documents were presented to him. And I wanted to issue a ticket or anything to be able to show up in court to discuss this matter. Instead of doing it here, I would have much rather do it in court, but I wanted to get everybody's attention by coming here tonight and addressing that, because I have tenants out there that have no water. They've not had water since the first of the month, and the water was taken away when everything was provided to the city that I was asked to do. And when I wasn't issued a ticket and my water bill was approved, never really got any resolution until the bottom. I called City Council, I called the mayor, talked to you all. Nothing got resolved. I talked to the chief, building inspector. He kept telling me that he was going to see what he can do to have my water on last Tuesday. That never happened. Then he told me the engineer was out for the rest of the week, so he wouldn't be able to let me know anything until Monday, this Monday that just passed. I have all my documentation. As a matter of fact, some of the city councils have the documentation that I have, that I have presented to the city to rectify my situation. This situation has been going on for four and a half years. I have done unlimited amount of just doing whatever needs to be done to get this resolved, and I'm not seeing any progress. I even talked to some of the councils and told them, I don't even want this in the media, but now it's made it to the media. As you noticed, I haven't been on television, because I wanted to address you all, because you all are the ones that run the city. I want to know why I don't have any water. I mean, I got tenants out there with kids that had to go to school that couldn't take a bath. And my water meter is being pulled, and I wasn't even given a citation. Nobody's came out and been an inspection since 2015, and nobody's telling me the reason why my water meter is pulled. I just want to know what's the issue and why hasn't it been resolved when I'm talking to people, trying to find out. And I think I came to Mr. Gilmore's office and talked to him, explained my situation. He explained his situation to me, but it's like, now I'm talking to the judge and the jury when I'm talking to a person that pulled my water meter, also the person that can tell me yea or nay on my architectural design. All of my inspections were done. My last inspection, the only thing I was told that I needed tourist accommodation. When I asked the last inspector what was tourist accommodation, he told me he didn't know that. I had to go to the health department to find out what tourist accommodation is. And I'm sitting there saying, but you, I mean, you work here in order to help me. Tell me what tourist accommodation is so I can find out, so I can go do what I need to do that's necessary. So, I had to go to the health department and find out what tourist accommodation is. They came out, they reviewed my building, and said, "Mr. Green, if you're using it as apartments, you don't need tourist accommodation." That was the last thing on my inspection. And, Mayor, that was two years ago. So, every time I come here and try to get a business license, certificate of occupancy, I'm always being told something to jump another hurdle, and I jump another hurdle. Every time I do this, I got to go back to my attorney. I got to go back through my attorney to do all of this, to jump through these hurdles. And all I've been doing is trying to be compliant to whatever's needed. And I've been doing this four and a half years. The first time they came out there, they said I had imminent danger. I had to go to court to prove that I didn't have imminent danger. Now I'm here, somebody coming pull my water meter, and my water bill is paid. Matter of fact, I just received another water bill on the first for $1,200, and I have no water for my tenants. Who's the judge and the jury to decide that? That's what I'm asking you all, the city councils, and as mayor. Who decides whether my tenants get water or not, and I haven't even been given a citation? Who decides that? Because when I'm calling and trying to talk to the people that turn my water off, I'm being told they got to get with someone else. I'm just being given, given, and given, and given the loops, and loops, and loops. But I've been doing this four and a half years. And everything they've asked me to do, I think I complied to it, because I've given some of you all the packages, and you see where I've been going through this, and I've been putting, I put everything in order to do everything that I need to do. And now my tenants don't have water. So, why would they pay me rent? I have to pay taxes. I have to pay light bill. I have to pay water bill. All this stuff comes from those people that are paying the taxes, that are paying the rents to me, and I'm doing my part. Whenever the taxes get behind, I get stuff put on my building. I had a sign that said imminent danger on my building for an entire year. After we went to court, no one from the fire department came down and pulled those signs off of my building. Those signs fell down by themselves. I knew I couldn't touch it. I believe in following the law. I believe in following the rules and the regulations. But you got to give me something that I can follow, because every time I present it, it's not good enough. Oh, that's not going to work. I came in here and I talked to Mr. Gilmore. I talked to Mr. Hessler, and I respect them, and I respect their job title. But when you take water from the tenants, that, I mean, and we, I never received a citation. No one in here can tell you that they gave me a citation to show up in court to find out what I need to do next. So, who do I go to and find out what do I do next when they tell me those architectural designs that Mr. Wolf signed off on, the architect engineer, they're not good enough. Well, what do you want? Well, we're going to have to review them. So, when you tell me you got to review it, the next thing I know, I'm getting a phone call from my tenants saying they're pulling your water meter. Why wasn't I given a ticket so I could go to court and let's do this thing in court? I shouldn't be here right now talking before you all about this, but this is the result of the situation. My tenants right now, I have a man that's out there that has to wash his legs every day, every day. This man came to me and said, "What are we doing about the water?" Only thing I can tell you is what Mr. Hessler told me. And is that better than? Who decides to pull a man's water meter when he's dealing with this thing? I just need answers, because I need to give my tenants answers. Nobody's giving me any Nobody's giving me any answers. I've, I've tried to keep it out of the media. The tenants called me. I decided not to talk to the media. I even talked to you now and said, hey, I'm not, I'm not talking to the media. I need, I need you to find out what's going on, why we don't have water. A lot of the information you didn't have. But I want to make sure that you get that information and understand that I have done everything that Mr. Hessler has asked me to do. I've done it. I even hired an engineer to come out there and do an inspection when I was told that they, that they were not gonna do an inspection. I hired a Mr. Steve Scalco, an engineer who was, who was an inspection inspector for 30 years in May. I hired this man to come out and inspect my building. To tell me, hey, this is everything that's going on. And know what I was, I was told? Whatever Mr. Scalco finds in the report and gives us, that's what we're gonna go with. I give them the report, my water meter still gets pulled. I don't know where to go now except for here. This is, this is my last resort. Where do I go? I go here. I just need answers to, to understand why was my, what my water meter pulled, and nobody's telling me anything. And I got tenants out here since the first of the month without water. I'm having to haul water, buy water, to make sure that my tenants are able to take a bath. That's not right. That's not right at all. That's not, that's not civilized. Who do that? Who pulls somebody's water meter when the bill's already been paid? You can go back and look at all the records. I was told it's your word against theirs, but paperwork, paperwork speaks the truth. Everything I've done, I came in here, I even asked for business license application. I fought with the city for two years telling them I didn't need a business license because my wife is a broker. Our business is up on our LLC. Finally, I get a letter 45 days ago after fighting this thing for two years to tell me, oh, yeah, you don't need a business license, you need a certificate of occupancy. Okay, what do I need to do? Need to have an inspection. Okay, are you gonna do an inspection? We're not doing an inspection. How am I, how am I supposed to get the COB if you're not gonna do the inspection? I don't understand that. How, where do I go from there? If you're not gonna do the inspection, how do you pull my water meter? I'm waiting on somebody to come out there and do an inspection. I was told it wasn't gonna do a water, do an inspection. I hired a man to do the inspection. But when it goes to the news media and make it look like, hey, he's not doing what he's supposed to do, he didn't do this or do that. But all the records are right here, right here in the city. Everything that I've done. Because when I asked Tracy to, to show me the stuff that I haven't done, he said, you can go and get it from the city. It's all in black and white. But he didn't know I already had everything. I got everything right there. All my documents. My inspection. Everything is right there in, in her bag. Showing where I complied to everything that was asked of me. And my water meter get pulled. Right now, I've got maybe three, four tenants out there. When I had 20 tenants. Because somebody came to pull the water meter. Who, who recommended that the water be pulled? Nobody's giving me any answers. I just want y'all to find in y'all heart to say, hey, let's vote on this thing to get this man's water back on. Because believe it or not, I respect each and every one of you. That's why I did the package and did it. I'm trying to go through all the channels. I don't want to be in the news media. I want to run a business. When I came here four and a half years ago, I took my 401K after working 22 and a half years to buy that business in Perry, Georgia, and I stayed right there in Byron. I'm from Byron, Georgia, right up the street. When I came here, it was a different town. And the first thing I told my wife is, this place is, this is a great place. Because they got people that can actually walk to their jobs and be able to still sustain. It's a lot of industry around here. These people, they, they putting jobs in these places. And three months later, now I'm fighting the city. I, I love City of Perry. I have no problem with City of Perry. I see what you all are doing. But I don't understand why my water's being pulled and why I'm fighting y'all four and a half years later. And when I came here, I came here to beautify that place. And I can't even do it because I'm spending so much money and money for you that how can you beautify a place when you started putting money out on attorneys? When nobody's giving you any answers? I just want y'all to find in y'all heart to, to get my water back on. Because my people need that water. They need the water home to take a bath. To make sure the kids can take a bath before they go to school. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I would suggest, if you would, to get with Mr. Wood and, and schedule whatever it is, inspections that need to happen. And, and that'll make it, that'll make that happen. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
The lady in the back.
I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Yes, ma'am, please.
Mrs. Maister, and about the situation with Crossroads. I don't agree with this water thing that's going on. I don't know if he did anything that y'all asked or he ever asked. We got this man right here that's home to him. I mean, he's been here for how many, years? And he don't want to go nowhere. And then you got her, she got a little girl, her kids, she don't want to go nowhere. That's home. And my situation, my husband, he helped me out when we were struggling and I had nowhere to go. I mean, it's, he's a good man and I don't, I mean, I'm so nervous, I'm sorry. So it's just, y'all need to please consider thinking about getting the water on. Because there's people out there who don't want to go nowhere and that's home to them, and it's just, it's not right what they're doing to this man. And he's good people, he's good, he's a good guy. And he helps people out when they need somewhere to go and then, you know, get somewhere to stay. And he took somebody out the street and they could stay here for three years, you know? And I mean, I can sign, like, a little petition. I just started this morning and I already got like 15 signatures. I just started at 1:00 this afternoon. Who does not want, you know, Crossroads going? It's like home, we're all a big family. And just thank you. That's all he's, I mean, I don't know, I've never done this. I'm still nervous, so. Just y'all please, whoever we got to talk to, get this water on. I got kids out there too, you know, and it's, it's just not right. Whatever, it's not right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Absolutely. Please, please stand and state your name and address.
Garenly, 402 Rusty Road, City of Warren, Georgia. You know, I'm sitting over there. I, I don't get involved in other city business because we have our hands full handling Warner Robbins, City of Warner Robbins, growth and, and daily challenges. I was over there, I'm fighting that deal because I, as a politician, you know, I got to have an empathetic approach to the concerns of the citizens of whatever the municipality or wherever you serve. And when I think about as being a part of council, Mayor and Council, and we having the, the power to flip a switch on and flip a switch off and turn things on and turn things off, and I, I sit there and I go to bed knowing that I have the, I'm part of a team that has the power to grant a child water. And I have water, and we've had devastation throughout the southern region where people who have the ability and access to water, they don't have it right now still at this point in time due to a storm. And due to just a decision, we have people without water. And I'm not telling you all, I'm not saying what to do or what not to do. But it just touches my heart. You know, if I, if I could do something about it, I would. And I know about the situation I've been going down through years, but I just can't. You know, the, the human side of me just can't sit back and sleep at night when I know there's a child and there's a family without, when we have the power. And even though, that their residents, they represent districts here. And if it's somebody in my district and I know that I have the power there and I'm the voice for them and I'm the eyes and I'm the ears for them, but I'm not representing them in the best way of my ability, then I don't need to be there. I don't. Because if I can, if I can go to bed at night knowing that I've done everything in my power to do us right, to be fair to everyone that represents this city, represents this county and this state, then I'm in peace. But if I know that I have not, that I have not done due diligence, you know, then where is the representation for all the citizens of any municipality? And I just, I just couldn't sit there no longer. I just can't even sit in. I've never been there before. And I mean, as far as the City Council, like the way y'all running there, like how your City Council goes, there's some things I want to take back and make some recommendations that we make to go. But the thing about that, think, think about the kids, think about the families. You know you have the power to do us right. And, and that's all I ask. I know there's process, but I also know that there is power in the tongue and power in saying go and do what needs to be done. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you. Item 13 are Mayor Items. I'd like to remind Council and the public that our next regularly scheduled meeting is when? On November the 5th, which will be our work session at 5:00 in this room. The next pre-council council meeting is November the 6th. The pre-council meeting's at 5:00 PM in the Psycho Pool Conference Room upstairs. The, the council meeting starts at 6:00 PM in this room. All of our meetings are open to the public. I would encourage your participation. Please remember the various events that we've got scheduled for. The citizens of Perry, we welcome anybody that wants to come. It would, I think you'll find something for everyone in all of that. That is all I have for now. Thank you for your interest and participation. If there's nothing else to come.
We're going to executive session. Are we out, Mr. Gilmore? Personnel and real estate?
Real estate. There's none else from the board. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate and personnel. Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.